Three, two, one.
All right, welcome everyone to the February 6, 2023, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. We have a joint meeting tonight with the Long Meadow Planning Board. Start with my hybrid meeting script. This is Select Board Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Yes, here.
Dan Zwirko.
Here.
And Tom is absent. Steph, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted in person with a remote option available to the public consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda on the town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please fill out the public comment form given upon arrival to the meeting. I will call on residents in the order in which the forms are received. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And as always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll just start with our announcements before we get to the joint meeting. Preliminary special town election. The preliminary special town election will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, February 7th, at the Long Meadow Community House. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. For more information on the special election calendar and other important dates, please visit www-longmeadowma.gov/elections. Vacancy, Long Meadow Housing Authority, tenant member. The town of Long Meadow is seeking one qualified candidate for appointment to the Long Meadow Housing Authority as a tenant member. Application should be submitted by February 10, 2023. To fill out an application and learn more about the housing authority, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. 2023 Long Meadow Rain Barrel Program. The town of Long Meadow Water Department encourages residents to consider purchasing rain barrels to the Great American Rain Barrel Program. Rain barrels are available for purchase by residents at a discounted price. The deadline to order is April 12, 2023. For more information on the program and how to order a barrel, please visit longmeadowma.gov/1421/rainbarrelprogram. And we'll move into our joint meeting of the Select Board and Planning Board. I don't know if you need to open your meeting, Cheryl?
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to this joint meeting with the Select Board of February 6, 2023. We already took a roll call of the Select Board. I'll go ahead and take a roll call of the Planning Board. Walter?
Present.
Cheryl? Present. Chris?
Present.
Bruce?
Present.
Tom?
Here.
Okay.
All right, thank you Cheryl. And sorry, Mike, do we have anyone here for public comment or online? So we don't keep people waiting?
If there's anyone in the chat that would like to provide public comment, please press the raise hand icon and we'll let you in. I don't see anyone as of right now.
Okay. All right. So. I believe we have, are we starting with our presentation?
Yes, so this is Patty Gambreini, right?
Yes.
From PBPC and-
Hi Patty.
Hi.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, nice to see you.
You as well.
I'll pull up your presentation.
So hopefully the choreography of this works okay. I have some animation in the slides to ease reading. There's a lot of information here, so I'm gonna keep nudging Mike to advance.
Just gonna make sure I'm sharing my screen on Zoom so everyone else can see it.
Okay. So I'm with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and I work a lot with communities that have to meet the EPA and MASTEP MS4 permit. And that's municipal storm sewer, separate sewer, ah, separate storm sewer system permit. And it's coissued by MASTEP and EPA. We have a group of which Long Meadow is a member called the Connecticut River Stormwater Committee. And that group is 19 municipalities and plus UMass Amherst, who is also a permitee. And so we do a lot of work to share information, to compare notes. And the primary mission of that group is really to do a lot of education and outreach on stormwater permit requirements related to education and outreach. This work here, the town engaged me and my colleague to look through some of your municipal code. And I'm gonna walk through a presentation that sort of lays things out. And the highlights in the code are toward the end of this, but you can advance. So there's four parts to this. I want to give you some context, you know, about the MS4 permit. But also some of the, you know, things we've been experiencing that I think some of these standards and changes advance. And then show you just some of the things that result from these standards. So what are we looking to advance? An overview of the bylaws work and highlights of recommended changes. And then open it up for questions and discussion. So if you have clarifying questions along the way, please don't hesitate, but otherwise, let's have questions and discussion at the end. Does that make sense? Okay, great. All right. So context, the two parts, and when I provide some understanding of what the MS4 permit is asking of communities that are regulated by the permit. And then also show a little bit about the extremes in weather. Next. So the first MS4 permit was issued in 2003. And that was sort of regulating municipalities that are discharging to waters of the United States and now waters of Massachusetts as well, because MASTEP is part of this permit. And there was a new permit issued in 2016, and I say new, 2016 doesn't sound very new, but it was the latest one. So before and now, the permit did seek to control runoff during construction to prevent erosion and transport of sediment into stormwater. And the idea is that stormwater enters your storm system and then goes into waters of the US or the state. So that's how the Clean Water Act, that's the regulatory pinpoint that EPA has in this. And the other side of the permit is to reduce stormwater pollutants based on what the development project looks like in the end. How are, how is stormwater runoff gonna be controlled by the project so that not more pollutants are entering waters? And, okay, next slide. Jump the gun. So this 2016 permit has much more about redevelopment. It mostly applied to new development and that your bylaws kind of address mostly new development. And redevelopment is to the maximum extent practicable. Now, there are specific standards for redevelopment projects as well. So the, sort of the trigger for application of the permit is if a project disturbs an acre or more of earth. Some communities have chosen to reduce that threshold if they were seeing specific problems, you know. One community I worked with had a lot of issues with steep driveways on single-family home developments, and they wanted to try to get some of that erosion and sediment control to stop going off the driveways on these steep slopes of sites that were being developed. But the way that we have worked in the group here in town, it's, the threshold is an acre or more of disturbance. And the permit defines development as an area that has not been previously developed to include impervious surface. And impervious surface are roads, parking lots, driveways, rooftops, anything that keeps rain from soaking into the ground. And then redevelopment, next slide please, is an area that does not meet the definition of new development. So on the, on the one hand, there's the controlling stormwater runoff control during construction. So what's in this part of, of the MS4 permit? There's more detail and specification for stormwater runoff control, standards for erosion and sediment control, site plan review, a lot more detail there, site inspections, some much more robust requirements there. And then they want you to have a procedure for tracking the number of site reviews, inspections, and enforcement activities. And we've tried to set that up in the way that we made recommendations in the proposed code changes to include that, to set you up to be able to collect that information. And that needs to be reported in your annual report to EPA. Next, please. So on the other side, it's post-construction, right? How is a site gonna be developed so that it's not exacerbating pollution issues in your stormwater? So there's standards for reduction of stormwater pollutants that include low-impact development, site planning and design strategies, and those are mandatory unless infeasible. And the MS4 permit defines infeasible. You can see that in the parentheses there. Next. And low-impact development, many of you may notice, is an approach that seeks to mimic a site's natural pre-development hydrology, protecting onsite features, limiting impervious areas, and using small-scale facilities to manage rainfall. So soaking up rainfall where you can onsite. Next, please. And then there's specific new standards for stormwater management for both development and redevelopment projects. So for those sites disturbing an acre or more, facilities have to be designed to manage, and there's, there's a few ways to meet this. You can actually, a developer and the engineers can look at it in terms of how are you gonna reduce the average yearly load of total suspended solids or total phosphorus? And there's differences between new development and redevelopment here. You can see that in the percentages. Or, which seems like a simpler approach, is if you retain, and they sort of did this work to understand, if you retain an inch of rainfall onsite, you're essentially meeting those water quality load reduction requirements. And that's for new development. And then for redevelopment, it's point inch for redevelopment site. So there's also an option to utilize off-site mitigation. And that's a much more complicated process that communities that I've been working with have not opted to adopt yet. They want to wait and see how necessary it is, but it's a third way. So there's the pollutant reduction, there's a soaking up the rainfall, and then there's this other option for doing off-site mitigation. Like if you have a hyper-urban site and there's no way to meet those requirements, you could go off-site. We didn't write anything into your code to cover that. It's, it's complicated and there's a big administrative burden. There is a statewide manual that I was involved in developing with the Center for Watershed Protection. And so it's worth looking at that if you're thinking it might be a good option, you can get a sense of what it will take to do that. Is it giving you trouble?
Uh, we just, I just had to fix it because it wasn't showing on the Zoom, but I believe that should be fixed.
Okay, great. So we can go.
This one or this one?
Yeah, this, this one is fine. So the MS4, there's also requirements within the appendices depending on the water quality issues you face or, you know, where you're draining to. So Long Meadow Brook is impaired for total phosphorus. And then because our whole region drains to Long Island Sound, we are subject to requirements based on reducing nitrogen load. So, and the total maximum daily load sets a limit for nitrogen for flows with nitrogen in them to Long Island Sound. So development and redevelopment projects as a result have to be optimized. The stormwater facilities have to be optimized for nitrogen and phosphorus removal. And I'm not an engineer, and one of my questions when we were doing this with Tim and Corinne was like, can you optimize for both? And they consulted with the engineers and you can optimize a BMP for both. So that, that is suggested in your code now. But it's based on these requirements. Next, please. So I know some of this can be confounding and it can seem, you know, somewhat onerous addressing all these water quality improvements. But I also want to like make the connection, because I work as a regional planner and I keep hearing people talking about their experiences of what we've had in terms of extreme weather. So I think that a lot of this is moving us toward better practice that has potential benefits in helping to address the extremes in weather. It's sort of reducing risk. Probably not as much as we really need to, but I think it's moving us in the right direction. So there's a benefit there as well. Next, please. So just to touch on some of the downpours, and you may have heard this through your MVP process. I like these maps and this data set because it's not projecting forward. It's really working with the weather record we have already. This one on downpours is from 1950 to now. And it shows you, yeah, certainly downpours are so much worse in other parts of the world or other parts of our country. But here in Massachusetts, we are already experiencing since 1950, a 40% increase in those large downpour events. Next, please. And you may remember, 2021, we came through an extended period of drought. And then we had eight inches of rain in a two-week period where the earth was so parched, like it can't really soak up rainfall. So we saw probably more runoff than we would have normally, which caused problems all over the place. This is an image from Belcher Town where a road washed out. And then the next one is in Palmer where flows like really degraded this roadway. Next, please. The other thing we worry about in the region is extreme heat. This is looking back again from 1979 to now. We talk about 90-degree days or hotter. So since then, we are seeing 11 more days average annually. Next, please. And this is a great new resource that I learned about. The Trust for Public Land has put together these images based on Landsat imagery from the summers of 2019 and 2020. So it might not be that new, but it was new to me when I saw it. And it shows you even in, you know, I always think of Long Meadow as, you know, a very treed community, but that you do have hotspots that sort of contribute to that, what we call as urban heat islands area. It increases the impact of even those 90-degree days. Next, please. So, you know, we talk about 90-degree days, but peak hospitalizations in the Northeast are occurring at 86 degrees. So we don't even have to hit 90 to see that people, you know, who are vulnerable, seniors, maybe young children, kids with asthma, are going to hospitals at 86 degrees. So that's the sort of human health side of this. Next, please. So just to connect the dots, you know, spell it out a little bit more. So the strategies to deal with water quality are really complimentary in dealing with extremes in rainfall and summer heat by reducing impervious cover and using sort of green infrastructure strategies, meaning plants and soils. You're really helping to create landscapes that can absorb rainfall and cool ambient air temperatures during hot weather. So I want to show you in the next slides, just some examples. So I thought this was interesting. I found this in the Federal Emergency Management Agency Guidebook. EPA has been talking about these, the state has been talking about these kinds of facilities for years. But now they're in this Federal Emergency Management Act Guide or Agency Guide, and this is from 2021. But this gives you an idea of some of the strategies that these standards are trying to advance. Rain gardens, vegetated swales, green roofs even, water harvesting. You talked about rain barrels in your announcement earlier. That's water harvesting, definitely. Permeable paving, tree canopy, tree trenches, and green streets. I'm just gonna show you a few more examples drawing from that page. So bio-retention areas, which are pretty much the same as rain gardens. They can be, you know, engineered in different ways, but they're meant to soak up rainfall. And so this is an example of a residential property. It could be an individual residential property or part of a subdivision development where the rainfall, you know, from the streets at least is going into this facility. And hopefully they're also thinking about where the flows from the driveways and rooftops going. Next. This is a parking lot on the left with a bio-retention area. It's at a school in Eastern Mass, but you can certainly apply, you know, use this application in commercial lots. And you can see the curb on the bottom left is slotted, so rainfall can go into that and soak up. And the trees, as they grow, will eventually help to shade the parking area, further cooling the impact of that pavement. And on the right is an example from Arlington. The DPW director there is really a champion on a lot of this green infrastructure facilities. He's doing a lot of capital improvement projects on his streets and plugging in these facilities where he can, really to soak up rainfall and reduce the amount of water going through his storm system. And I think they may also have combined systems in Arlington, I'm not sure. Next. Vegetated swales and bio-swales are very similar to bio-retention and rain gardens, but they're actually, they're soaking up rainfall, but they're also, it's moving to somewhere. So not only can you soak up, you can delay flows, so not all the water is rushing to somewhere all at once and causing erosion and sedimentation in streams. Next. And then permeable pavement. This is an example also from Eastern Mass and Wilmington where they did a pilot, and this was a few years ago, and they experimented with a bunch of different surfaces. You can see in the parking stalls on the sort of the left side, they used pavers. And then in the drive lanes, they used porous asphalt. This is very large-scale example. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the West Farms Mall in Connecticut, but I hung out there as a kid, I'm embarrassed to say. But they have, they had massive parking lots. And the parking lots were designed to meet the peak demand for parking during, you know, the holiday shopping period. So when they went to redo their parking, and this is a bunch of years ago now, they really thought about, okay, how can, how can we shift this? And so that, that whole peak area is now more a park-like setting. That grass is actually structural pavers, but you wouldn't know it. But it structurally holds up to autos and other vehicles driving on it. And it can be plowed. The plow in the middle picture, the recommendation is you lift the plow up. You have to set it up a little high so it's not digging into that, the plastic cell material for the pavers. Next. So that was just to give you some ideas of where, you know, what this is pushing toward. So I wanted to give you just sort of a graphic overview. On the left is the US EPA MASTEP MS4 general permit. And the big horizontal oval is really what we've been talking about, that sort of erosion and sediment control and stormwater management. Above that, we haven't touched on yet, but that's part of your code. It's a bylaw that already exists. It has to do with the illicit connections and discharges bylaw. And we did look at that as well. Next. So we looked at zoning as well, because there are elements within zoning and subdivision regulations that contribute to the creation of impervious surface and the way standards are written. Next. So what we recommend is setting up, you know, the stormwater management and erosion and sediment control with a general bylaw. You now have two general bylaws that cover each of those. And I'll, I'll talk about what we kind of did to combine those. But then really take all the technical and detailed information into regulations so that the technical experts on the town staff can update as changes are needed. And then in your zoning bylaw and your subdivision regulations, really lean on, for drainage, lean on the stormwater bylaw and regulations. Don't, don't restate it, because you always run the risk of an update in one place doesn't happen in another. So if you just by reference, refer to the bylaw and the regulations, it's just a safer way to go. And then, of course, I don't want to forget the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook standards, which tie to your wetlands regulations at the state level and also your local wetlands bylaw. So this is just a sort of summary of work, and then I'll get into some of the highlights. So for that discharges, the illicit discharges element that was at the top of the previous slide, we looked at Article Six, Chapter 600. Then we looked at Articles Six, Chapter 700 and 800 and brought those together. 700 addresses erosion and sediment control and 800 addresses stormwater management post-construction requirements. Then we, once those were combined, we updated the new Chapter 800 to comply with the MS4 requirements and pull the technical detail and standards into new stormwater regulations. And then we looked at subdivision regulations and zoning bylaw, making sure that they were aligning with your new stormwater elements in the code that are recommended and the MS4 permit. So digging a little deeper into some of the highlights, Article Six on the illicit discharges, there were some modifications to definitions. There wasn't a lot here, it was in pretty good shape. And then we did add some prohibition of activities relative to the town's storm drain system that are from the MS4 permit. And then several clarifications in the enforcement section to make it more understandable. Next. In that, Chapter 800, I mentioned we combined, we drew 700 into it. There were modifications to definitions. We improved the articulation of applicability. There are additions and clarifications to exemptions. Clarity and consistency on DPW directors of stormwater authority, including in the sections on administration, rules and regulations and waivers. And clarity on how the stormwater management and land disturbance permit process coordinates with other permitting processes here in town. Next. So the new stormwater regulation repeats sections. So this is, you know, I had this advice long ago when I started doing this work from an attorney, that in your bylaws, you want to, or in your regulations, you want to repeat the content of what you have in your bylaws. So nobody's missing anything. And then you can, you know, have additional sections that provide more detail or technical info. So those additional sections relate to permit application requirements and procedure, performance standards and design requirements, what is needed in the content of the stormwater management plan, erosion and sediment control, the operation and maintenance plan. There are as-built drawings required now in the MS4 permit. What the site supervision and inspections require. and inspections require, and surety and certificate of completion. In the zoning bylaw and subdivision regulations, I mentioned we were trying to make sure there was alignment and clarifying the need that projects disturbing an acre or more need to go to the stormwater management and land disturbance permit. There are recommendations in there to remove barriers to advance those low-impact development approaches that I mentioned, and improving street design and parking lot guidelines. So that's a lot, but I'm glad you had a chance to look at the presentation before, so that, you know, you could, I guess, digest it. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to talk about anything related to the work we did.
So I had a question. This came when Corinne presented this to us, she said you'd be better tasked with handling this.
I hope.
So we're a built-out town, where there's not a lot of big development that's going to happen here.
Yeah.
Is there, is it, is there a reason you would still stick with the one acre to trigger this? Or is, for smaller projects, smaller redevelopment is probably what we would see. Is it better to have an incremental approach where we can tackle things that do come up by going below one acre?
I, you know, it really depends on what the issues are you're seeing. I would say if you're having bigger problems with smaller projects, then that's worth a conversation to understand what those issues are, and then is there a solution through this, you know, through these changes? Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does. I guess I don't know what our issues have been.
Yeah.
And if, but like I said, I don't, we don't have a lot of one-acre redevelopment projects. It just doesn't come up.
Yeah.
As long as I've been here at least. So it's something that, to me, and this may be short-sighted, but if we say this only comes in at one acre, it just, I don't think it will do, it won't affect a lot of projects, really.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess, you know, maybe it's a conversation with the Planning Board and Conservation Commission if there are things that, you know, I mean, it's a matter of fine tuning the dials, right? Some communities do have a lot of issues with smaller developments, and so they dial it down, and they have like a tier one application and tier two application. You know, sometimes smaller projects, you can articulate it as you have to meet all these standards, but there's not that formal permit application. There's just, these standards are important. I think, you know, with a smaller project, you get into like heavier engineering, and so there's a cost issue for, you know, people are doing smaller projects. So that, that's something to weigh into that as well.
Patty, you said there was a previous, we are following a previous MS4 protocol that this town has adopted.
Yeah. So what you have in your general bylaws already followed that earlier permit?
See, I think of, Josh, we did the Young Mansion, for example, and I believe they have a permeable driveway, but the cooperation, I don't know if it's enforceable, I just know their engineers and their thinking forward, they sort of followed those standards and did it. Even the swale, it's up by the Long Meadow Mall where the kitchen is, and even that's sort of forward-thinking, it's a barricade to stop people from driving through the stores. But my question is, we got to take this to the town meeting and dump this amazing amount of information on people at once. It's mind-boggling. I mean, it's, it's great, and I know we have to follow the law, but wow.
We had the same conversation last time, yeah.
Yeah.
It's very, very difficult to explain. Go ahead, Corinne.
Patty, one of the questions, and I appreciate your presentation, but I'm going back and looking at the bylaw changes, and some of them, you know, I, I don't read, and my concern is other people won't read, that it only applies to greater than one acre. And I'll take, for example, Chapter 600, which is, you know, one of the sections you have here. There's a whole section there, six dash six oh seven, on prohibited activities.
Yeah, that doesn't have the trigger for one, that is all.
Right. It doesn't have a trigger for one acre.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of things in there that, in Long Meadow, some of these houses have them is what I call pre-existing conditions.
Correct.
So are we going to present this to town law, town meeting, and somebody's going to look at this and say, wait a second, that's going to cost me money to get the compliance with that from where my house is today? I mean, is that, to me, is that what, is that what we're facing? Or am I reading that wrong?
Well, I read, for example, you're right. There is a section that exemptions are allowable. And I looked at East Long Meadows MS4, and for example, they exempt foundation drains, which are very common in houses pumping water out of their basement that's flooded, which is typical in Long Meadow. But you're taking it out of this one in this proposal. You know, leaves in the gutter, it leaves in the, in the storm drain. Yeah, I mean, that's, it's not about the one acre issue. There are other little nuances in there that do hit a homeowner. Then suggestions about what happens when you tear your driveway up and repave it? Are you maybe susceptible to DPW requirements to have a permeable new driveway? I mean, I don't, that part I don't understand either.
If you're not disturbing an acre.
Okay.
Yeah, then.
I'm concerned about, like you said, we have to take this to town meeting, and people are going to read this and say, I'm not going to vote for it because it's going to cost me money. And, and so the question is, maybe to Walter's comments, you know, are there specific items in here that we need to be able to exempt to get this passed, to get 99.99% of it passed the town meeting, that we exempt that 0.01% or we add those things? And I, I guess I don't know enough of what we can and can't do, because I can read through it and say, we ought to exempt that, we ought to exempt, but if that doesn't cut the mustard with the DEP, then, you know, we're enacting an improper, ineffective program.
Wouldn't existing houses be grandfathered, or whatever buildings be grandfathered in?
No, there's language in here that says it's been 14 days, they have to comply.
Right.
It's new law.
Yeah.
So two weeks to comply with this.
As it says right now, so. Yeah.
Mr. Levine, I think Corinne also has her hand up.
Okay.
Look, I guess I was just looking for Patty's comments on, you know, to what extent could we, if we needed to exempt certain things in order to get it passed? And at what point do those exemptions render this thing worthless, so if you're going to exempt them, don't even bother with it?
You mean to remove prohibitions from the.
Prohibitions that'll cause this to lose at town meeting.
Well, like clean water. I mean, I understand why you do, you shouldn't be allowed to take chlorinated pool water and flush it into our, into our stormwater system. But that is an exemption you do have in our proposed bylaws is non-chlorinated pool water. But there are other little exemptions that might, you know, people will say, wow, that sort of affects me. So the pitch on the one acre and greater is fine, but.
It's the illicit discharges list.
Is it illicit, though? I mean, if you're pumping clean water out of your basement, I mean, for example, I just don't know why we don't.
Yeah, there's a lot of sump pumps in this town.
Yeah. And a lot of grandfather, people who have, original have storm, gutters that connect actually to the stormwater system dating back to the twenties and thirties, probably the forties, too.
Oh, Corinne, go ahead.
Thank you. I actually raised my hand first to address Mr. Levine's original point, which was regarding, I'm not calling at this point, but I did also want to address what Mr. Gold just brought up. So Patty, correct me, correct me if I'm mistaken here, but in our working group meetings, which again, were Tim Keen, the town engineer, myself, and Patty and her colleague from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Tim and I were very clear that we were not going to include, sorry that IP just kicked on, oh, we can hear that, that we were not going to include any additional prohibitions other than what was required by the MS4 permit. So everything you're seeing that is new in that Chapter Six, Article Six, Chapter 600, that, to my understanding, and Patty, please, if I'm mistaken, correct me, that's required by the MS4 permit? So that's just to address Mr. Gold's question about, you know, to what extent can we remove any of those and still be in compliance with the MS4 permit? Is that correct, Patty? That anything?
Yeah, you know, we did that in July. I want to go back and look, and I remember that we were trying to make sure we did that, but I, I can go back and look again, because I think it's warranted based on the concerns you're raising. But that was my recollection, was that, you know, we were only doing what was required in the MS4 permit.
So, I mean, I, I can imagine somebody standing up at town meeting and say, I propose an amendment that would, and then they try to remove something. So what you're saying, Corinne, is that we need to stand up and say, you can't do that because it's a requirement?
I don't know.
I'm just trying to get clarification of how we, how we move this forward. Because I think that, you know, if, if my house fit in there, I'd go to the town meeting and try to exempt it. Clearly, we can't do that.
Well, I think one of the concerns that you have is the timing, too, right? That someone has to come into compliance within 14 days, and so is the 14 days a requirement of the?
I don't remember, honestly. So we can look at that, and if, you know, there's a potential to expand that, that makes perfect sense.
There's also a matter of, you know, enforcement. Who, who and how is this going to be enforced? But.
Could our new code enforcement officers perhaps take on this work?
Well, but the, but the point is, do you know whether my house has a sump pump that's pumping out into the, that's what I mean. And I don't think we want to say, oh, don't worry about it, we're not going to go into your house and look for it. We've got to say, if you're out of compliance, you need to comply. I mean, that's the right way to approach this.
This is, it's always very difficult to make a, forward-facing bylaws are great. Ones that are looking at the past are very difficult and can cause a lot of issues. I'd be curious if we could, you know, our zoning bylaws, say a building that was in compliance as of 1962, I think, is still, it doesn't have to comply with a new law put into place after, but if there's a redevelopment or if something happens, a change in circumstances, then you get into compliance. And I wonder if we could do something like that to alleviate some of those concerns. I understand why we would, in an ideal world, we need to go back and fix everything, but it just, it'd be very hard for us to get it through.
Exactly. Yeah. That's interesting. Yeah.
So what if somebody puts in the wrong type of driveway? Are you going to tell them they got to, they got to rip it up?
Well, there wouldn't be.
Spend another $14,000.
No, it wouldn't be an acre, Donna.
Pardon?
Wouldn't be an acre of disturbance.
Okay.
At least, I hope your driveway's not that big.
See, that, that, the category I'm looking at, it says the following items are prohibited.
Yeah.
Period. It's not one acre more, just they're prohibited, systems. But you're right, the disturbance thing is one acre.
Right.
As long as we keep it that, I think there's one house or two houses in Long Meadow, that would apply, and that's it.
So, yeah, back to my, I hate to keep picking on this foundation drain issue, and again, only because I saw East Long Meadow permits it, and this would not permit it. But in Massachusetts, for all you home improvement people, it is actually technically illegal to do your own plumbing. So that would be a trigger. Your sump pump breaks, you have to call a plumber, and they would come and I suppose would enforce and say, I cannot, I can't issue a permit to fix your pump without disconnecting it from the stormwater system. So that would be an example of enforcement. It would be all through, I would imagine, code enforcement through plumbing, gas, electric. One example. So again, back to, I hate to pick on that one thing, but it's just funny how, because Corinne just said that this is the regulations, but then why is East Long Meadow, their MS4 is up to date? Why is there's different respect for exemptions? Mark is right, we need to look at this, and it's got to be a pitch to the public here. Something, something will stick out, there's so much minutia in this, that something will put the hair up on someone's back at town meeting. And I assume this is how it works, right? General bylaws are handled by the select board, right? You guys would do the public hearing. The planning board would do our public hearing on the zoning bylaw part of it. And the goal would be to present this in the spring.
Or fall.
Or fall.
There's no, this is not, this does not have to happen for annual town meeting.
We want to take our time on this, because it is complex, and it is, and, yeah, there's.
And it's positive. I mean, I'm totally for it. I mean, I don't, I just think, you know.
Let me go, please.
I just had a question. I wasn't here, and I haven't watched the meeting where the first stormwater bylaw was adopted. What, what happened at that meeting? I mean.
You mean in 2008?
Yeah, to get something passed for the very first time, that's a monumental task. So for those of you that were here, I mean, how did that meeting go? What kind of education did you have to provide then?
Zero.
When was it adopted? When? I don't even recall. Do you, Bruce, recall when?
I don't recall any, did you say it was in 2008?
That's what Patty said. This is a revision to what's already on the books.
Right. I don't, I don't recall any big deal. I mean, it may have just been somebody said we have to do this to comply with same law, and okay, it passed.
Wow.
I think that is the, go ahead, let, Corinne. Go ahead, Corinne.
That would have been, I think, the last MS4 update, again, Patty, if you correct me, was in 2008, so it would have been around that time. And I did just remember what Mr. Levine brought up originally, which was, is there a reason why we should be looking at smaller than one acre projects as a trigger? Along the same lines as my response to Mr. Gold, we wanted to keep much of this in line with the strict interpretation of the MS4 permit to avoid potential controversies or feelings of governmental overreach at town meeting. So, so that is one reason for keeping the one acre trigger. But also, of course, we talked about what effects we were seeing in Long Meadow, and it was Tim Keen's opinion that we're not seeing that much effects from smaller, from smaller projects that, you know, would have a noticeable difference on the maintenance or upkeep or, you know, quality of our storm sewer system. So it was his strong opinion that the one acre project was what we really should be looking at, and we didn't, in addition, because additionally, many of these projects are also going to be triggering site and design review, which, which has its own criteria for an erosion and sediment control plan. And part of the zoning, the recommended zoning revisions that the planning board will be looking over does involve building out what that erosion and sediment control plan looks like and sharing it with the DPW, which they already do. So it's sort of, it's a less restrictive, but still gives the DPW eyes on those smaller projects as well.
Okay, thank you, Corinne.
Patty, what town, you didn't mention it, what town was it that actually had stricter MS4? You said about with steep slopes and driveways?
Belcher Town did, but they ended up, I think, so I worked with them like four years ago. So this, you know, the requirements to institute these standards was year four of the permit. So that was June 30th of 2022. So there is, you know, the clock is ticking. I don't know that EPA is going to come out with a, you know, a sword right now, but it's, it's not like there's a lot of time. I think it's important to, to move in that direction. I'm not sure what you're saying in your annual reports, but I know EPA is looking at what's in your annual report, and where are you on your updating your standards and your regulations?
So at our initial meeting, I asked this in my normal bumbling way, but my question was, what happens if we don't, if this doesn't get passed?
Yeah.
And the answer is, at some point, DEP will do something to our town. What, what is that?
I don't know.
The find because we're sending too much nitrogen into Long Island Sound? That's a great reason to pass the regulation.
Not updating our bylaws. Yep.
Go ahead, Corinne.
Yeah, a couple other questions I have about options for us. Section six dash eight oh eight says the DPW director gets the authority to grant waivers. We've got a pretty busy DPW director who happens to be here, but why is it the DPW director, A, and B, you know, in our town, do we have the ability to change that to the, the planning board or the conservation commission or somebody like that?
I don't know if you want to answer that.
I do believe that we do have that authority. If you're asking for my recommendation, I would absolutely not recommend that. DPW directors historically are the ones that give this waiver. They look at it through the engineering department. They're generally better equipped for that. But I don't know if you've seen examples in other communities, but all the ones I've reviewed have said DPW.
Yeah, they're just signing a memo that's produced by the staff in-house. So it's just their signature on the document, I would imagine.
Yeah. And it's different in different communities. I mean, it's where, where you have that technical expertise. Some communities have it, really feel strongly that it's in their conservation commission. Others feel like it's in the planning board, but there's several that feel like it's got to be with the professional staff, the DPW director.
Okay, and I guess the second part of my question is six dash eight ten is enforcement. It says the DPW director has, you know, is, is to enforce this, and I guess, you know, we now have code enforcement officials, and frankly, you know, I don't think the DPW director wants to be going out there enforcing this, this law. It's a bylaw. to be going out there enforcing this law. It's a bylaw. We have bylaw enforcement. Can we change that if we see fit to do that? And maybe Lynn, we want to weigh in on that as well.
That's a similar situation where I wouldn't recommend code enforcement do that. This is more technical than what code enforcement is doing. We do have the director here, if you want to hear from him tonight.
I guess the question is, what does it mean to enforce this? I mean, it doesn't say there's fines. It's, you know, stopping a project, I guess, or changing, Sean, do you want to hear what you...
There's fines, oh, yeah.
I just don't understand what it means by...
So, I won't get into too much detail, but historically, when there's been non-compliance, I've issued a letter to the homeowner. If they weren't in compliance in a certain period of time, there'd be a letter from our council saying there'd be action taken from the town against them.
Which would be what?
Variety of things that depend on, I think, the, what the, how egregious the conflict is, what, usually it's me walking through the step-by-step of the council, and almost always it's enforced. I've never had someone not do to what we asked.
I hate to say that, but can you give one example?
Connection from sewer line into our stormwater, sometimes discharging from a pump in their basement into the road, creating ice issue, which at one time, we had ice dams building up a road, and I sent a letter saying they were responsible for any accident that happened. They'd be solely responsible, not us. So, stuff happens pretty regularly, actually. There are times when a homeowner has no choice but to discharge water from their basement into a nearby storm drain. So, the elevation of their house, we generally try to work with them, giving them specific permits within their basement, saying, you're allowed to connect, but these are criteria and the inspections we're going to be doing. So, there's got to be some wiggle room based upon this specific instance, which is why I think we're probably, my department's, would better to deal with this than a blanket enforcement.
So, I saw in here, so there's, if the enforcement doesn't work, you can proceed to fines. And then if there's an appeal, I know it hasn't happened, but it could. But if there's an appeal, it goes to the town manager. And I was wondering, that seems a little strange to me. Is that a requirement of the, and I see that there's some comments on the side. Is that...
Yeah, it's not a requirement of that must, they're not telling you how to do enforcement. Yeah.
Okay.
Are they ever brought to court? Got the court order to do this?
Well, it says you go to court after the town manager. And I just question whether the town manager, you know, I like the idea of Lynn presiding over all this, but it seems like it's kind of tail wagging the dog if we want to, if it could just go right to court. So, and it's, we can look at that later. I was just wondering if it was required.
Yeah, it's not out of the MS four permit. And I, you know, I think, Corinne, we, that whole section, we put to question to town council, right?
Right. And it's, oh, sorry, Patty.
Yeah. And their recommendation was to bring the body of that into the bylaw and then repeat it in the regulations. So, I don't know what you're looking at, but if you're looking at the bylaw, the enforcement section would be elaborated, and what's in there.
And if you're looking, sorry, but at chapter 600 still, you can see town manager is in black, so that's the way it currently is. That's our existing bylaw. So, in this proposal vision, we just didn't change that. But because we're taking a look at this whole bylaw now anyway, that, you know, certainly within our power to add that to the list of proposal visions that go to town meeting.
Lynn, is this going to be consistent with the general code revisions that we just did? Because one of the things Patty said is we're going to repeat things in multiple places. And I thought we specifically tried to remove those multiple instances in general code revisions so that we didn't get out of sync.
Yes, I don't think what Patty's referring to is repeating in other sections. It may reference and refer you back to that section, but it's not going to repeat that language verbatim. Because it's like you were talking about.
The regulations will repeat it, but it won't be repeated in the bylaws, right?
Patty also mentioned that that's where you run into problems, where something gets updated in one place, but not in another place. That's what we're trying to avoid.
Maybe we want all the fines pointing at one fine, okay? So, we can choose that. Okay.
We may, I think we've gone a little past this, but something that Corinne said a little while back about if something wasn't caught by the new bylaws, the planning board can do some things through site and design review. I just wanted to point out that, well, site and design review would certainly apply to any commercial development. And in fact, in the past, we have done things with water retention or water, with water or burns or whatever. Site and design review does not apply to individual houses. It would apply to a subdivision if there were many plans, but there aren't going to be many of those. So, and most of the objections are, or not just objections, but fears that homeowners are going to say, oh, my God, I don't want to have this done to me. There'd be no oversight for that from the planning board because site and design review does not apply to individual homes. But I mean, even if they're, you know, being newly built, let alone ones that already exist. So, I mean, there's no oversight or site and design review for this type of thing with homes.
I think that's the key. But, and that's why, I think Mark's right to say, the focus will be on prohibitions.
Well, what if somebody, a disturbance of one acre or more? So, somebody with a two-acre lot tears down their house and is rebuilding their house. Is that a disturbance? Does that qualify as an acre or more because the house sits on two acres? It has to be what?
The Marinelli House?
Yeah, like Marinelli over, you know, in Forest Glen, or more of that. Would that count? So...
If they're disturbing an acre.
But the house would have to be the size of an acre. So, all they were doing is, say they tear the house down, and it's whatever, it's a quarter acre of the full acre. It wouldn't count then toward this.
If the disturbance is a quarter acre.
A quarter acre, yeah.
Yeah.
Of, within an acre property. See, that's what Bruce's point is making about. Josh, back to Josh about having less than an acre.
There may literally not be a house in town where the house is an acre large.
Right. Would it have to be an acre size?
I mean, there may be someone on the lot is an acre, but, I mean, if you're tearing down a house and building a new house, presumably neither the old house nor the new house is going to be, you know, an acre in the area.
Yeah. So, I mean, the way it's written, it wouldn't affect those properties.
Yeah. I mean, I understand. You're trying to, just, we're trying to comply with MS four standards currently, the new regs. And it does give, Sean, enforcement. It's just, I still think, and Mark and I think, somebody just will dig into this and bring up one sentence that just starts a whole bunch of trouble. But, and Josh, to Josh's point, we really, yeah, take time on this. I don't think this is ready for spring. I think it really needs to be vetted.
That's one of the things, because we need to, we need to time this out, because we have to refer the zoning bylaw to you. You got to hear within 65 days, and then there's a, we have to clock it all with whatever we can do it at.
What's going to change between now and the spring and the annual town meeting? If we can get through the process, you know, it's not like we're going to go appeal something or change something. This is the best we got. This is what it is.
I think there might be some specific questions, but yeah, I think in theory, that's, you're right. Because we have to do this, one way or the other. We're going to get dragged over the finish line. So, it's a matter of how we...
You always hope that you have a public hearing. You hope that people come out at the public hearing and, you know, vet their concerns, but those are usually not well-attended, and it all hits, hits the, hits the skids at the town meeting, but...
I think, I think our water use bylaw that went through our last meeting was more controversial than this. And it went through pretty well. There was some tweaking we did up before, and I think we still have time to do that. But I think, I'm not terribly worried about it.
Let's do it.
But like anything else, it has to explain, and we learned some things from the water bylaw. And I think Corinne's done a good job of laying this out for us, and Patty, thank you as well. But we have to do it, one way or the other. So, it's just a matter of how easily we can get it through.
Yep.
The planning board doesn't need a referral for this. You're going to take this up.
We're supposed to vote. I saw that. I was wondering about that.
We have to send them the zoning bylaw.
We do, we have to.
Yeah, because that way, we don't, either we would initiate it, but you can initiate it, or the zoning board appeals can initiate it, and then pass it to the planning board. Doesn't require like a citizen petition or anything.
Corinne, is that correct? The select board has to send it over?
Yes, that's correct.
At least the way we're doing it. Okay.
I'll make a motion that the select board refer this to the zoning, to the planning board.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All right. All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's on the zoning. Anything else from the select board? Anything else from the select board on the general bylaws?
Maybe it's a bit off topic, but on the armada's construction, I'm just curious what kind of measures the planning board, I guess, maybe put in place for the rebuild? Drains and anyone want to talk about that?
I think that might be off the, out of the agenda.
Sean, do you want to? Yeah. See, we went under the advice of town departments. So, you might want to explain quickly, because I was thinking about the MS four thing where it says rebuild versus, where did I see that? Oh, yeah, development versus redevelopment. Okay? So, that's a redevelopment.
Yeah. So, and I can't speak in detail about this because Tim was the one that handled it, and fortunately, he wasn't here, but it was a redevelopment. So, pretty much, we just looked at the drainage that existed and said it was sufficient from what I can remember. There might have been some onsite storage that was included, like some deep sumps, or some ways to slow the water down onsite that were sort of added by the department as a recommendation. But for the most part, there wasn't a lot of change from what I can recall. Do you remember, Corinne, if there was anything more in depth than that? I think it was just a couple deeper sumps onsite.
Sorry, the internet cut out for a second. You're talking about the Maple Road Plaza. So, yes, my understanding is that where that left off between DPW and the engineers from that project representing the Long Meadow Realty team, was that they did add in a few, I believe there were more water quality systems, subterranean rather than water volume reduction systems. But that's in compliance with their current bylaw, which just says that redevelopment has to be as good or better in terms of stormwater than it was before. So, that, obviously, the proposed revisions to the bylaw make more stringent standards to that redevelopment.
There was no onsite treatment there. It was just sort of adding on.
So, like with the Long Meadow shops, the expansion of the CVS, that's development. So, that did fall under the, must have fallen under the 2008 MS four, because they put a lot of infiltration drains on the site. So, there's a lot of stormwater stored underneath the Long Meadow shops now, to keep the water onsite. So, but that's what's so funny, the redevelopment versus development. You'd think a redevelopment, we might as well take advantage of that and fix things, but don't understand.
Should we make a motion to adjourn our joint meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you all for joining us today.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Very productive.
We're just going next door.
We're just going to go down hall.
I think it's going to take a lot of our audience members.
We are.
So, if anybody's here for the planning board meeting, it's going next door.
Oh, we're over here. Okay.
Oh, I don't know which one it is.
Follow them.
We're at 8:15. Follow them.
Yeah, follow them.
Somehow I fell in the water treatment saga last time to the stormwater tonight.
Lucky guy, Justin.
Gee, that's a popular, that's a popular group there.
Something you guys said.
All right. Next up on our agenda, we're talking to an empty room. We have the DEI committee appointment memo.
Yeah. So, I put forward a memo. There was one vacancy left or one opening for the committee, and there was one applicant. That would be the last appointment to the committee if you vote on it.
Okay. I'll move that we appoint Gabriel Mokbo to the open seat on the DEI committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. And again, thank you to everyone who applied. We're very happy. We have a full committee now, and look forward to working with you. And we already did resident comments. Did anybody pop up in the meantime?
No.
All right. And moving on to select board comments. First, I want to note the passing of one of our town residents and a great champion of our town parks and our school fields, Pete Landon. We're very sorry to hear of his passing last week. We were lucky to have him in town. And to cover a few other things, Center School had a pipe burst over the weekend, and I just want to thank the town employees and, I want to show on his department, and all the teachers who got the, worked hard to get the place cleaned up to the best they can and moved some classrooms. My, one of my sons is moving classrooms, and I can't believe, I got a picture of what they did, and I can't believe how hard everyone worked. So, I just wanted to say thank you for that. Any other select work comments? Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I have a bunch, but hopefully I'll go through them pretty quickly. I attended the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's MPO, which is Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting, and they had an update on the Blueberry Hill School Safe Street Sidewalk project. So, everybody should know, the project was actually advertised for bid on, in November. The bids were open January 4th, and on January 20th, the bid was awarded to, I think, NC Incorporated of Ludlow in the amount of $357,635. People in town should be comfortable to know that that's mostly federal money, some state money, and I don't think any local money. I think it's all in kind, and our DPW is tasked now to be coordinating with the contractor on scheduling that construction. So, people in the Blueberry Hill, William Street area will start to hopefully see some improvements in the sidewalks and the traffic patterns and things like that. And I think, if I'm guessing right, it'll probably be done sometime this summer. So, I also attended a Pioneer Valley Transit Authority meeting in the end of January, a couple of them, and they made some changes to their paratransit, which for people who aren't PVTA people, that means dial-a-ride. So, their dial-a-ride hours were all extended. They now run till 8 o'clock at night and also on Saturdays. So, people in Long Meadow who use dial-a-ride, most of ours goes through what's called the tri-county, which is now, I think, the, or tri-town, which is now the five-town trolley system, but the dial-a-ride system has been extended. So, I think it's a real advantage for people in town to know.
Can you explain what that is? I don't know.
Sure. So, for seniors, or primarily used by seniors, but people with disabilities, the PVTA is required by law to provide, if you will, door-to-door service. And so, rather than have some system where all their buses are handicap accessible, they use a paratransit system where you can call and literally schedule an appointment. I'm going to the doctor at 10 o'clock on next Thursday. And you make the appointment, and somebody will pick you up at your house, get you on there, get you there, and, oh, by the way, I need a ride back at 11 o'clock. So, those paratransit, or some people use it, in fact, to go to work because there's no local bus service. So, by extending the hours, and this is somewhat post-pandemic response, but it's also a response because of the increased demand, it's making, if you will, paratransit or bus services available far more people. There is a charge, like there's a charge for any bus service in town, but it's pretty reasonable relative to an Uber or, you know, a cab or something like that. It's PVTA system.
That's great.
So, it is being, they are expanding it, and that was passed by the entire board. Lynn, Sean, and I toured the MRF, which is the municipal recycling facility. That's where our recycling bottles, cans, and paper go. And I don't know what, if they have anything to say, but my takeaway from it was that recycling, in specific, our single, our dual-stream recycling, where we separate out paper and cardboard on one weekend, alternate weeks with metal and cans, really does pay off. The presentation we had shows that, you know, prices go up and down, but it's financially beneficial to the town as well as beneficial to society and the environment in general for recycling. It's an amazing place just to see the, you know, they squish these things into little cubes of metal or cubes of paper and stuff like that that go out, and how much of that stuff is going out. So, it's, I think it's important to note that. Also attended a building committee meeting, and they're looking at, Lynn was there also, meet relative to their responsibilities, relative to capital planning and community preservation. And so I think we still have some discussion that we need to look at relative to those items as we go forward to give a little bit of guidance, I think, to the building committee. So that's kind of a summary of where I've been up to the last three months.
All right, moving on to the town manager's report.
So I'm pleased to report that a contract was signed with AECom for designer consulting services for Bliss Reynolds and Greenwood Pool. In the amount of $70,599, this is improving the pool drainage at each facility. Work at each facility is broken down into three phases. Phase one is a field survey, wetland delineation and permitting. Phase two is design development and bid plans, and phase three will be construction phase services. The DPW has signed with Beta Engineering. I think I had reported on this earlier in last year, but this is an update to that. Beta Engineering is working on that comprehensive pavement management plan. In the work they've done so far, they've discovered that the town was being underfunded by nine miles of roadway per year. This is due to a miscalculation in MassDOT's accounting of Long Meadows Public Roadways. This will add approximately $9,000 to $10,000 in additional Chapter 90 funds, which just about covers the cost of the Beta Engineering work. Once that report is finalized, Beta will present the results at an upcoming select board meeting sometime this spring. The Maple Center Shopping Plaza in January, at the January third meeting, I had updated the board that the cleanup efforts at the Maple Center Shopping Plaza were going to be restarting again. This was to clean up the debris that had been left in the basement. I'm very pleased to provide photos that are available linked into the report here that show that the basement area has been cleaned out. The architect and the structural engineer were onsite, and they expect to have construction documents ready in about 30 days. And again, those photos are linked there that show the before and after to show how much work they did accomplish in those two to three weeks. And lastly, in my report, I won't go through all the nitty-gritty detail here, but I think it's a pretty impressive report that we've really increased communication and engagement. We've made quite an effort over the last year on this, and now we have the data to track that. The data tracking is a huge thanks to Mike. This is something that he's taken on. But their numbers are really interesting, especially as we look at how we get the word out. We've, for social media, we have a total of 4,027 followers. Our posts generally perform really well. We do track all of this data. And it's broken down in the report. I won't go through the numbers. But I also launched the town manager report in August of 2022, and we're reaching over 1,000 people a month on Facebook, 381 people on Instagram. It's about 2,602 people. That was the August report. That's through the social media distribution, but also a direct email distribution. So I think that's a pretty successful communication method. We're going to continue to track that as we look at how we're reaching people and who we're reaching and continue to tweak our communication strategy.
That's very interesting to read that on the social media, and thanks to Mike for doing that. One of my questions, is there a, on social media, is there a way to reach out to the town directly? Like on Facebook, can you ask, I should probably know this, but can you ask Long Meadow a question or send you a message to ask something specific? Because people just post on the forum and then everyone yells at each other.
Meaning can someone post to the town's Facebook page and we respond to that?
Send you a message asking a question.
People do that. It depends on, it depends on staff availability, whether we have time to monitor it and respond to it. Most of the questions are related to trash pickup and whether the recycling center is open, things like that. But we do try to keep up with questions that people submit.
So it might be information that's available elsewhere, like on the website.
Generally it is, yes.
And, sorry, Mark, I just have one more question on the pools. So I'm really happy to see that this is, some work's being done on this. Is this addressing, I know drainage was the big issue of both of them, but there are other issues at the Bliss Reynolds Pool. Is that working underway to address those or is that being done, are you taking care of the drainage first?
The work that AECom is doing at Bliss Reynolds Pool is all encompassing.
Okay, so like the lower, the chlorine issue, like that's all again, taking care of this?
Yes.
Great, glad to see that.
This is just the design work. That 70,000 does not include.
Oh, no, no, I know that. Just the way I read it was improvements to pool drainage. And I thought that was, I was wondering if that was only what it was addressing. But if it's looking at all the problems, that's great.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I was going to also ask about the pool. I think one of the things I'm hearing is, you know, and I don't know whether we're prepared to do this or not. In fact, I know we're not prepared to do this. But there's a, you know, some people are saying, well, the pools never open again. And so I guess the question from my mind is, is there a timeframe? And I know you put in there, you know, if we get an estimate, it's a lot of money. We got to find the money to do it. But be that as it may, I think, you know, it'd be helpful for the town to hear the intent is to reopen the pools, matter, you know, at least that's my intent. I don't know. And it's a matter of what it costs and how long it's going to take. But, you know, it'd be wonderful to see what we could do and be creative in trying to get this done for this summer. It doesn't sound like that's going to happen at all in the Reynolds Pool, but.
It's very doubtful that Reynolds Pool would be up and running this summer.
But I think people need to understand that the intent is to reopen that pool.
Absolutely.
And frankly, if it doesn't open this summer, that'll be probably be four years or five years since it last opened, given COVID and it was closed. And then it gets, starts getting pretty tough to reopen a pool that's been closed for five years.
Yeah, it happens. I mean, there's been a lot of communities that have done that. That entire area has been a big focus since I've started here, between the Bliss and Laurel Park work and the H&amp;H study that's happening in Cooley Brook right now. We also have the active recreation area conditions assessment that is about to launch the community survey. So hopefully people will be very vocal in that survey about their desire to see Bliss Pool reopen. But additionally, one strategy that we're talking about internally is with all of the emphasis that we've placed in this area, what can we do in terms of going after some grant funding? And there were quite a few communities that were really successful in park grant funding last year to make improvements to their public pools. So that's something we'll be closely looking at as the design plans come together and as some of the other work finishes up for Cooley Brook and Bliss and Laurel.
I think we have a great opportunity here to make, when the pools are, especially when Bliss opens again, to make it a really more attractive and popular place. And so it could end up being a good thing. It might be closed for a long time, but come back better than ever. I think that would, people would be really happy with that.
That's fine. You know, I just want to make sure that whether we can do so overtly or not, you know, that there's some agreement, our intent is to fix those up and reopen them as opposed to do a study and close them down.
Yeah, I mean, these will have bid-ready documents at the end. Maybe fall meeting, we'd be ready for something, maybe. But it's going to be costly.
Sure it's going to be costly.
Always is, yeah. All right, great. Moving on to the approval of draft meeting minutes for January 17th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 17th select board meeting. I sent Mike a couple of typo kind of things, but I think he got them to the, what's it supposed to say?
Second.
Further? All those in favor? All right, moving on to new business. First up, we have this new DEP Water Use Conservation Regulation and NWWA involvement. So Lynn, are you presenting this or Sean going?
A little of both. Yes, so we've been following this issue. We've participated in a webinar last week with Mass Water Works Association and the attorney that they have retained. They do intend to pursue fighting these new regulations with, against DEP. They have reached out to, you know, other users that may be impacted by this. So like I said, we did participate in that webinar. It's not exactly clear what role we could take in this, if any. Springfield Water and Sewer Commission does intend to file along with Mass Water Works Association. And so the question then comes to the town if we're looking to toss our name into that filing as well. This would be a lawsuit, and we would be filing to be party to it. But it's not entirely clear whether the town of Long Meadow has standing to file. I think we certainly could, but then it could be challenged. Are, we do not have the direct permit from DEP. It would be Springfield Water that is directly impacted. But certainly that impact flows down to the town of Long Meadow as a customer.
Oh, go ahead, Mark.
I was just going to say, I support the town of Long Meadow, you know, joining Springfield. I don't know if it's a, we're behind you 100% and we're just going to push them forward, but I think they need to hear from at least one of their major customers that we agree with what they're doing. I, you know, frankly, I'm not sure we have standing, or even if we had the standing, if it's worth us putting a whole lot of resources into this thing other than write them a nice letter and make sure the Springfield Water Department, Water and Sewer Department knows that we're supporting them and let the DEP know that it's not Springfield standing on their own. It's also one of their constituent.
I should also add, in the current, in the regulations that were passed, there is an exemption that at least appears that Springfield will receive or be qualified for. Springfield did bring that up at the webinar. I think they're wanting to make certain that they are protected and that exemption stays and applies to them. They didn't go into a ton of detail in that meeting, but they do believe that the exemption applies to them right now. And I think they're just looking to make sure that that stays protected.
As far as the lawsuit goes, Lynn and I have talked about this a good amount. It wouldn't surprise me if we could get standing as an end user, but, and we wouldn't be challenged, I think. But we also, we would just file and then not do anything unless we want to rack up thousands of dollars of fees. And that, that doesn't make sense to me. And it would just be really a me-too lawsuit, and we'd still have to pay to file a complaint, et cetera. So I think a letter is a good idea, certainly. But to really make any impact, we would have to go through the lawsuit, file an amicus brief or something. And that, I don't think that that makes sense to me. But if we want to do a letter to Springfield, I think that is a great idea.
Well, there's a continuum, Josh, between doing nothing and filing a lawsuit. I'm trying to move us off of doing nothing. Clearly, I agree with you. I don't know, we need to go all the way up to filing a lawsuit. And somewhere in there is a, write a real harsh letter to the.
I'm happy to do everything up until that, yeah. I think that makes sense. I don't know how much that moves the needle, but it's not, it's probably not zero, but I, yeah.
You know, I think it, you would like to think that it's helpful for the city, for the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission to say, and by the way, you know, our biggest customers support us.
Yeah, I would think so. Yeah, I'm, I agree with you there. I'd be able to do whatever we can.
I don't know that we need a, I don't know, do we need a motion to send the letter?
Or we could have a letter. We'll bring a letter next, to our next meeting.
Bring a letter.
And move on that.
Josh, you okay? Ian, you okay with?
A draft letter and then approve it?
So this letter is to Springfield Water and Sewer saying we support them?
No, it's the DEP saying we oppose what you're trying to do.
Well, it's already done, but.
Well, we, okay.
So I don't, I don't, I'm just trying to understand who we're sending it to. The DEP regulations passed, they've gone into effect, so.
Well, I guess it is to Springfield Water and Sewer saying we support your opposition to this regulation. That's what it would be then.
Yeah. I don't even know if we, it wouldn't do any good because now they're a party on the other side, the DEP, per the regulations. So I don't think, if we were a party, we couldn't communicate with them. We're not a party, but I don't see the utility in sending it to them. Then if at some point we can tell them in a letter, at some point if we need to be involved, if we need, they need any information from us, any testimony, we can provide that within our, within reasonable limits. Sean, did you have anything else on the water use regulations?
I don't think so.
Okay, Dan, Mark, did you have? All right, moving on next to the proposed trench collapse protection policy. Mark, this is something you brought up, so please go ahead.
I think it was our last meeting, we had discussions with Columbia Gas about some work they're going to do. And it struck me as, you know, we've been there, done that, and we've actually had a fatality in town about people not knowing the soil conditions in Long Meadow. And it seemed to me that, you know, our moral obligation is to warn or to tell contractors the situation they're facing in Long Meadow, which is, I think, very different from many of the surrounding communities. And so I quick, put something together that's in our, in our package. And I sent it to Sean and DPW and got back a bunch of comments. And what it came clear in these emails lately, recently, is today, is that, you know, it doesn't define trench, and we probably ought to do that. But then if you do that, you know, how we define a trench, how our policies or procedures that the DPW defined trench, how OSHA defines it, how Mass, OSHA defines it, may not be consistent. So my suggestion would be that, because I believe we have an obligation to tell our contractors of the situation they're coming into and require them to do things they may not want to do because ultimately it's, it will save lives. I'd like to just refer this back to the DPW and tell them, figure out what it's going to take to accomplish that kind of a objective where we notify people who are looking to dig in town that we're consistent and that everybody's doing something consistently rather than me or us trying to wordsmith this thing, let the DPW do it. But our intent, my intent at least, and hopefully the board's intent, is the obligation to warn contractors and to protect our employees as well, which I think we're doing. So that's where I'd like to do with this now, rather than, you know, I wasn't looking to vote on this at all, but rather than, you know, come back and tell us what we need to do to make this work and how we make sure that when the next time ever sourced or somebody comes in town digging things up, you know, or lane construction or something like that, they know what they're facing.
Yeah, when you sent this to me, I think it's a fantastic idea. My only, I just want to make sure we're using the right words, like you said. And I think it's smart to have this part of the permitting process that's acknowledged. I just want to make sure we're saying the right things. And so I think it's a great idea morally and just from a legal standpoint for the town, just to limit our legal liability, but certainly morally as well. So I don't think.
Yeah, so I'd like to, we do have something on the file, and I'm going to take a look at it. And I think what I'll do is make some edits and update it, and maybe I'll send it over in draft form for everyone to take a look at.
That's fine. And if we have the policies in place, maybe all we have to do is refer to existing policies, not create a new one.
We do, and I actually emailed you the wrong SOP when I sent you last time. So I, it was my fault for, I emailed you our updated in-house trench policy, which is a little bit different than what we give contractors, but we do have something. But I need to look at it, and it probably could use refreshing. So this will be a good opportunity to do that, I think.
And like you said, when I, when I sketch this, you know, put up this draft, you know, is three feet the right depth, four feet, five, you know, we don't, obviously the OSHA and the Mass, Mass OSHA, they have their own idea of what the right depth is that needs trench protection.
I think what we got in the email today was up to 15 feet, which is.
No, no, but it's as little as three feet is what you're saying.
Yeah, we actually had OSHA bust the contractor about two weeks ago upfront, so.
Good. All right, so I'm done with this stuff.
Okay.
But hopefully it'll come back.
Well, thank you, Sean. We appreciate you coming in today for your input. All right, next up, we have the quarterly investment report.
Did you vote on that to refer it?
I don't, do we need to refer or vote on it? It's not before us.
That's fine.
We can. I don't think we need to.
No, you're fine.
I'm good, man.
If you don't do it, Sean, we'll come in.
Have a good night, guys.
We know your work, yeah. Thanks, Sean. All right, yeah, quarterly investment report.
All right, I'm moving in Erica Brunel now.
Hey, Erica, can you hear us?
I can. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening, we can. Thank you.
Okay. So I am here tonight submitting my quarterly report on the status of the town's cash investments for the period ending December 30th, 2022. As for the policy, the town held low long-term investments that exceeded the five-year limit. The individual bank balances were under the $20 million balance provision. All banks received the highest rating from their Bank of Green, and all accounts were fully insured or secured. Closing the second quarter of fiscal year 2023, we have seen interest rates continue to increase, which is obviously a really great thing to see. Most noteworthy was People's Savings Bank, who offers a rate of 3.80% on our daily depository account. That's up from 2.47% at the end of last quarter. And also noteworthy is Newbury Port Bank, which offers 3.35%, and that's up from 1.25% last quarter. We continue to monitor the interest rates almost on a daily basis, and I put a little blurb in here that we're continually getting new products, being CDs, money markets from various institutions. And I've been reviewing those offerings, and I didn't want to jump at the first one that came out, but I am happy to announce that I opened a CD in January, which will be on the next quarterly investment report, but it's 4.0% for nine months, and that's going to hold a large stake of our stabilization funds, so that will increase our interest revenues substantially. The OPAP Pension Reserve Investment Fund saw positive return in October and November with interest returns of approximately $111,000 and $206,000 respectively. By December, unfortunately, we did take a loss of approximately $96,000, and the quarter ended with a net gain of approximately $221,000. The balance as of December 30th was $5.5 million approximately. And I will continue to seek the highest possible interest rates and diversify funds and maintain all of the compliance within Massachusetts and state and federal laws. We are looking at these accounts very regularly. We're in them every single day, the Assistant Treasurer and I, and we are very mindful of the interest rates. So I just want you guys to know that we are looking at them. We do know there's some that are out there that are higher. I don't want to just immediately open and close the accounts left and right, but we are monitoring them and we are taking advantage of them as we can.
Great. Thank you. Anything on board, Mark?
Yeah, Erica, it's Mark Cole. I just, question, do we, do we negotiate interest rates at all? I mean, do, you know, especially when they're, they're ratcheting up like this, you know, do you ever have, have the opportunity to go to say, look, we don't really want to pull our money, but these guys are offering us a quarter and just quarter, you know, point more, or, you know, whatever it is, five basis point. Is, is that something we can do?
Yeah, definitely. So the interest rate on the CD that I mentioned that I opened in January, I do understand it comes after this quarter, but I thought it was really important to mention it. This is a CD that I actually went to Adams Community Bank and said, listen, this is what I'm getting from this institution, this institution. I don't want to pull our funds. And unfortunately, we, we're going to have to if we can't meet somewhere in the middle. And they went back to their higher-ups in the bank and came back and were able to let us know that within a week, they were actually offering a product that's selling these guidelines, and that's where this account came from. But absolutely, I have some meetings set up in the next two weeks with some of the institutions, and this is the hot topic right now. They know that across financial institutions, rates are varying quite a bit. Some of the feedback that I did receive from some of the banks with lower interest rates is that they were higher with their interest rates, or longer when COVID hit and the interest rates were dropping, so they're gradually going back up. They don't want to jump. But they're very much aware of it. They do know there's products out there with rate rates, and they have to be competitive. So it's definitely a conversation we're having, and we will continue to have as interest rates are fluctuating.
Thank you.
I'm glad we're in a race to the top on the interest rates. It, how long is the CD?
Nine months, she said.
It is nine month, uh, yes, a nine-month CD.
Do we have a policy on how long we can tie up funds like that?
Yes, they can't exceed five years, but I wouldn't even go near five years, honestly. I don't like tying up funds that long, so nine months to me was a safer bet, and it's the stabilization fund, so it is a big chunk of our money, but still provides possibility in our other funds.
That was going to be my question. So if we're not, we're not going too long, so we don't have to worry too much about penalties if we pull out earlier? Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Well, I'm, smart thinking. I, I'm glad you did that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Daniel, so?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. All right, I'm sorry, Erica.
It's okay, thank you. Have a great day.
Looked down to Jay. Bringing in Jim on the Council on Aging Revolving Fund Limit Increase.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Jim. Thanks for coming in.
Sure, thanks for having me.
All right, go ahead. What are you, what are you trying to do tonight? Jimmy there? Oh, he's muting.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, there we go. All right, you saw mute, Jim, but you can go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I was just hoping to get an increase on our revolving account from $85,000 to $150,000. The reason being is we established $85,000 a few years back when we developed the revolving account, and that was at the old center. And over the past year, we've had, you know, so much growth in the new facility that the, our expenditures have increased. So to kind of stay, stay current with the account, I was hoping that we could get this increase to $150,000 for the rest of this fiscal year, and then I could analyze our numbers going forward and to, you know, kind of evaluate whether we'll keep it at the 150 or have to exceed it going forward.
How did you arrive at 150?
Because basically around the halfway point, I was, I think it was right around now, around $86,000 when it comes to expenditures. So I kind of wanted to just have a little bit of a cushion until I get to the end of the fiscal year. We've had a lot more expenditures when it comes to our nutrition costs and our program costs as well, because we've gotten such a, you know, great response from the community when it comes to all of our program services. So the increase would be feel was necessary.
Go ahead, Mark.
And Jim, can you give us some examples, if not details, of what monies go into this revolving fund and what monies come out?
Yeah, so all of our nutrition expenses go out. So when we're paying for our food costs for our meal program, for our in-house dining program, and for our Wheels on Wheels program, those are all the, our food expenses, and those costs have risen over the past year. And then when it comes to our programming, you know, we pay a lot of vendors to offer a lot of different programs at the center, whether it's exercise classes, or whether it's special events and functions like that. So since we gained in so much popularity, we've gotten a lot more, you know, just a lot more people in expenses when it comes to all the different kinds of things that we're offering. So, you know, again, from the old center, when we started the account, the $85,000 covered it, but, you know, with the, the amount of people that we've been serving over the past year, we just, we exceeded that relatively quickly.
So if I signed up to take French, and it was a $15 fee, my fee would go into this revolving fund?
Correct, yeah.
And the payment to the French teacher would come out of that?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, and, and I, I guess I need to ask, even though I don't want people to know, at the end of the year, is there money left in the revolving fund? Is there, or is it truly a in equals out?
No, there's money, there's money that's rolled over each year, and that, that covers a number of expenses when it comes to some of our programs that we have. We've been able to build up some funds, and yeah, it's, it's kind of continues to roll over each year. And, you know, we've, we've been able to do a lot of different things with the programs and our nutrition program because of this account, give us a little bit more flexibility based on all of our other general line items.
Thanks. And, and when you say nutrition costs, that's the cost going out. Where does that money come from for, for the meals on, is that, would be contributions from LOCCA or Faloka or things like that?
Yeah, no, Mark, those, the monies that are coming in are suggested donations from our clientele. So the people that are coming into the adult center daily to have a, a lunch and their congregate dining program, they're, they're making a suggested donation to the cost of the meals. And the same goes for our Wheels on Wheels people. They, they make a suggested donation to the cost of the nutrition programs. But the suggested donation, again, it is suggested, and it's a very modest donation that we ask, and it's been a little bit challenging over the past year to keep up with some of the high food costs, along with, you know, some of the, the ability for some of our clientele to be able to, to afford those donations.
Thank you. John, I've got, Lynn, I've got a question. Why would we put a cap at all on a revolving fund if it's money in and money out? You know, maybe they have a, a trip to Las Vegas or something, and it's very popular but very expensive, and all of a sudden they shoot up to having, you know, $200,000 in because you haven't paid the bill yet.
That is a very good question. I don't know the answer, other than possibly control over, over the amount.
I mean, I have no problem increasing this. I, you know, I just don't understand why, because I can envision a, you know, one program that happens to be expensive and popular could really take up your entire, you know, room here, but I guess we'll cover that when we get to it.
Based on the number of attendees and the, the amount of high-volume programs we've had, we could have this, we could have this each year. So I understand what you're saying, Mark.
No, well, theoretically, at the end of the fiscal year, it gets pretty low, although, you know, if there's a carryover program, because, just because of the fiscal year, the money will remain in, the income will remain in there to pay out the expenses, you know. But I know that the Adult Center used to run trips, and some of them were, you know, hundreds of dollars for the trip, and so you brought in a good deal of money sometimes. I, I've got no problem. I mean, I, I'll make a, you know, I, I don't know what you want to do. I'll make a motion to increase the, the, the limit of the revolving fund for the Long Meadow Adult Center to $150,000.
Second?
Yeah, and just for discussion's sake, I, I understand theory-wise, organizations have the caps on revolving funds, but I, and I, if you have to keep coming back, I, I get that. And so I, I don't see any reason why we need to worry about the Adult Center, thankfully. So any further discussion?
No, no, I just think, I think it's important for people to know, and for us to know, that there are controls on the money. We still have the two signatures on money going out. You know, all the things that are standard accounting requirements are, this isn't like it's a, you know, it's in somebody's back pocket. This is still a, a town account. So, you know, I think people need to understand that it's, it's subject to all the controls of all of our town, you know, town funds. But it, because it's a revolving fund, it builds up and then goes out.
Okay. Anything further?
No.
All those in favor? Sir, I need to step out for a second, make a quick phone call, Mark, if you want to.
No, we can't, because we don't have three people.
We want to quorum.
Yeah. Go ahead, make a phone call.
Oh, okay. No, we'll be able to finish up.
Okay. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, cool. Thank you. No, thank you, your time. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the one-day liquor license application for...
It's actually two one-day liquor license applications.
The 16th and the second, right.
So I, I think it's important that people, we recognize that we're actually approving two separate one-day liquor licenses.
And Mike, we've gotten fees for both?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license. I'll do them both at the same time. The two one-day liquor licenses for March 2nd and for March 16th, both from 5:00 to 7:00 PM or 5:00 to 7:30 PM, for the Adult Center, for the Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund.
Second.
All right, anything further? All those in favor? And finally, we have the 2023 DTLA application. Lynn, you want to go ahead?
Sure. So there's a memo or a letter attached that goes into more detail why this is important for us, for the town. This checks off two of our highest priorities. It helps us plan for housing, it helps us plan for growth. All of this information is going to feed into our long-range plan, and all of this will help the housing needs assessment that also needs to be updated. It does require the Chief Executive Officer or the Planning Board Chair to sign off on this letter, and the reason it's coming in front of you is your meeting was soonest. So that's why you have this letter there tonight.
Lynn, I just have a quick comment. How do we stand, I think people should understand that we get an allowance, is the best way I can put it, I guess, for services at the PVTA on an annual basis or a biannual basis? Is that correct? And, and we're drawing against that allowance?
In this case, I think so. There is a DTLA and there's a, what's the other one?
LTA?
LTA. They have almost identical acronyms, so it's hard to keep it straight. I think one of them is as you explained, and the other one you have to apply for. And in terms of our allowances, I believe this is our, only our second one this year, if I rem, or, I'm sorry, cal, fiscal year. Calendar year, this is our first one, but I don't know if it runs calendar or fiscal. I, I would need to look at that.
But the point is, this is part of a, you know, an allotment of services to the town of Long Meadow that you need to...
Yes.
Essentially draw on, and that's what we're asking to do.
Yes.
Okay. I've sufficiently stalled for you to come in. All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we authorize the town manager to sign this deal, DTLA request to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, thank you. My dog has escaped, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Jeez, I think we're all set. I will, I will move that we adjourn.
I'll second. Anything further? All those in favor? All right, good night, everyone. Thank you.